Good evening and welcome to the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley-Broom. We have a full quorum present with Council Members McKenzie, Karn, Arnold, and Gay. It is 6:01 PM and so we will begin with a presentation by the Aboraba Communal Improvement Union to hold a cultural exhibition and picnic event on July 20th.
Mayor Council, I do not believe they are currently here. I did reach out to them so I can follow up you with email on Monday.
All right, moving on.
Well, if they show up, should we put them on the back end?
Well, we will handle it when, if they, if they show, but let's move on.
Well, the question, hold on there.
Sir, sir, they're not here. If, so if they show up, we will, we will hand, we'll address it when they get there, here, but as, as presiding over the, the, the agenda. Are they here? All right, great.
The question was how do we want to handle it? That was my question.
They're here.
They're here. Oh, go over here. Here, you're up first. I'll flag your event to them. Yeah, flag your event to them, Mayor Council.
If you could, sir, introduce yourself.
My name is Prince Togo and from Aboraba, communal improvement, union.
Come in that mic a little bit.
Okay. We are of Africa in, in Beijing and we're having a picnic, a cultural picnic, cultural event.
That, oh, sorry. That will be having at the GICC and our guests will be lodging at the Marriott and then they have already booked their rooms. We also be having this outdoor event that will be the picnic and cultural exhibition and which we have applied that you grant us the pleasure of having that in College Park also since our main events are all in College Park.
Yes, this was a future event?
Hold on, hold on, one second here. Wait, hold on, hold on, let me, I haven't recognized you yet. So, anything else you want to add, sir?
His question?
Not yet. Do, do, is there anything else that you want to add before we get to questions?
No, that's all.
All right. So, we'll open it up to questions. Councilmember McKenzie, any questions? Councilmember Karn?
So, you mentioned the second event that you wanted to have after this one? Is that what I heard?
Oh, that's the one we'll be having at GICC. That's already, we already booked that. But the one we'll be having will just be a one-day event that will start at 8:00 PM and we end before 6:00 PM.
I, I got that one on here. I thought I heard you were looking in the future for us, for another event.
No, this is the only one for now.
Okay, okay, I just misheard you. How many guests are you expecting and how many room nights at the Marriott?
We, we are expecting about three, three to five, 500, including kids at the back there.
Pretty good number. So, how about the room nights? You, you booked, you're not booking that many room nights, are you?
At the Marriott? Oh, we are, we have about close to 200 rooms booked.
200 rooms booked at the Gateway Marriott?
Gateway, yes, sir.
City manager? That's a pretty good numbers in one event. All right, all right, sounds good.
Councilmember Arnold, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Gay?
No.
Anything else you'd like to add, gentlemen?
Are we invited?
Councilmember?
Yes, sir, you're very invited. It would be our pleasure to have you.
You know, Dr. Emanuel here, our city manager, it sounds like you all have the same accent there.
Oh, okay, okay.
My heritage is yours.
Okay, okay, okay.
We are Eboz.
We are Eboz, yeah.
Also, I'll, uh...
Nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
I'll also have the same haircut, so.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great project.
Anything else? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you very much.
Next up, the 2024, 2025 recommended budget presentation.
Dr. Adairn?
And we're supposed to be here doing the presentation. Can we go to item number three and then when it all comes, you know, I do the presentation?
Okay.
Item number three, discussion on administrative process for managing council meetings, agenda items, sponsored by Councilwoman Tracy Arnold. War three.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you. So, this item is just for us to talk about the process and procedures that we go through when it comes to adding items on the agenda. I think in February, actually probably in January, I started asking questions on what the process was. And we received at that time from the city clerk, a calendar which outlines when items are due, right, what those deadlines are. However, that is not a process, right? And so, it just seems like, especially, you know, with the example of our last meeting where we had different versions of the agenda, items being missing, items not getting added, items being added at the last minute, agendas being posted at the last minute, that we need to come up with a process. We need to come up with a process and stick to it, whatever that is. And so, I want to have this conversation to understand, to get a better understanding so that we can all come to a consensus of how items are added to the agenda, either via the departments or by mayor and council.
I'm discussing this issue with the city attorney and then if you want to share, you know, share the light on the, of what we, you know, discuss.
Yes, Mr. City Manager. Councilwoman, we, we, I looked at the charter and the city's code of ordinances and there is neither a charter provision or a code provision that governs how items are added to the agenda. And I looked several times and I, I mean, it just is not there. And so, obviously, we have had agendas over the years and the decades. And what has generally happened is the office of the city manager works with her or his staff to put together an agenda and it's a, a process that has no real firm rules or procedures. It's just, you know, council should be a, the department that says we need to get these sewer, whatever contraption and we need to get it on the agenda. And so, so it just kind of comes together in that kind of fashion of, you know, I have suggested and recommended that perhaps it would be a good idea for the council to consider whether you want to have a more formal process for creating and adding items to the agenda. That's your prerogative. But to this point, by tradition, the city manager has put together the agenda and that has looked a little bit different with, with each city manager we have had.
Understood. So, you know, in thinking about my experience of working with boards and putting together agendas and having agenda review, making sure that items have all of the backup documentation, our process seems to be extremely convoluted. And we probably need to look at having an official process, a standard process, so that we don't continue to have hiccups, especially when it comes to having different versions of the agenda posted, where the public has one thing, certain city council members have something else, and the city manager has a, a third version.
Yes, ma'am. I, I can put up, you know, put a, a procedure together and I'll submit it to, you know, the governing bodies, you all look at it, you know, and if it's something that you all agree with, let me know. And that just, you know, and if we need to do an ordinance on it, you know, so be, you know, put a process together, you know, that we all have to stick with it. Because from time to time, we have a cutoff date. When I assume this position, we start the past, I believe, two agen, uh, two agendas. We send a draft on, on the Monday that by Wednesday, that's the cutoff. But for some reason, items come, you know, we need this, we need that. And it, it just, like, I wasn't here the last. We send stuff to them on Monday, the Monday before last, we sent the draft.
Are we referring to staff or city council?
City council, to city council. We meet on Mondays.
Right.
And then we start sending the governing body, the draft of what we're meeting on on Mondays for agenda review.
Yes, we can start doing that.
You know, we started doing, yes, sir.
Councilmember Karn?
Well, why don't you all, you know, get, you get together and come up with something, some recommendations and bring them back to us. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
All right, just leave it there, leave it there.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll move to the budget presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Council. You have before you a PowerPoint presentation and I think the slide's up on the top. I'd like to start off by saying, you know, you all have $196 million budget. It's made up of all kinds of different businesses that we call funds. And, you know, like Coca-Cola, Georgia Pacific, they have one business, one checking account. You have many different businesses with many different checking accounts and each one of those funds acts like a business. The one that the taxpayers most associate with is the general fund. It's your biggest fund. It does police and fire and code enforcements and the things that the city residents think of as a city. But you also have electric, you have water and sewer, you have sanitation, you have a convention center, you have BIDA. And so, there are many different funds. All your collective businesses is 196 million. The first slide, which is page two of the PowerPoint presentation, you have had various budget workshops over the last couple of months. Here were the changes that together you and the citizens came up with that you wanted in the budget workshops. I won't go over each of these individually, but you see them there. Page two, page three are the total of all of those changes from the budget workshop. That totaled is $2,989,000. Two million, two of it is in the general fund and 750,000 is in the other fund. This chart is designed to show you what department, what is the line item, what is the change, which fund it comes from, and over on the far right, how it's to be funded. And so, we've done all that. The budget that you have seen before has these changes in it. And it was totaled $2,989,000, $2,200,000 in the general fund, 750,000 in the other funds. Next page, page four. These are additional citywide expenses to be discussed. This has not been put in the budget before. They have come up in the last couple of weeks and I'll go over those in pretty well detail. GMA manages our pension fund for us. The stock market declined dramatically in '22. The S and P 500 was off about 25%. I think GMA's returns were negative 18%. And so, when they calculate the negative return on your investments for that one year, the pension fund cost went up by 5.16%. So, you can see there that general fund bears 870,000 of that increase in pension cost and other funds 390,000. Cost of living for all employees, 4% with a $3,000 cap. That's a million 201,000 extra. The general fund's 807,000, other funds 394. There's a one-time incentive for employees, 206,000. The general fund cost is 119,000, other funds are 86,000. And then our insurance premium increased by approximately a million dollars. Althea had included in the budget already a $300,000 increase, expecting it. So, the budget that you see versus what's before you tonight is a $700,000 increase. And you can see it split 227 for the general fund and 472 in the other funds. So, it's a total of 3,386. The general fund was 2 million total and other funds were a million three. Next page, page five. Staff recommendations as to how to accommodate the extra 2 million in the general fund was to freeze all vacant positions except those critical operations for savings of 1,399 and actually make cuts to the various departments of 624,000. Turn to the next page. What positions are frozen? You can see legislative is a part-time custodian, engineering is special projects manager, police patrol, six police officers, fire suppression, five firefighter positions, economic development was a program manager who has left. That position won't be funded again. And then the director of airport affairs, eliminate that position for savings of 174,000. So, there's a million 399 in freezing vacant positions and a reduction in workforce. Next page, page seven of the PowerPoint presentation. These were the various cuts to the various departments. The city manager and Althea went over it the last two weeks and came up with these cuts and collaboration between the two of them. You can see the negative amounts or the cuts and then you see the line item on the far left. Turn to the next page, page eight. So, the police department had cuts of 102,437. The police department's also including corrections in the E911 services fund. Next page, page nine. Recreations had cuts of 204,250. You can see the line items and the cuts. Next page, page 10. The IT, fire and inspections had 172,000. You can see the line items and the negative amounts for the cuts. Page 11. Public Works had total cuts of 145,237 and that's your total of 624,000 in cuts. Next page, page 12. We talked about earlier the various different funds. This chart is set up such that you can see the very top line is the beginning fund balance. And then the revenues on the other page would be expenses. There's a line item highlighted in yellow, budgeted use of reserves. You can see that we're using none of the general fund reserves. The entire general fund budget is balanced without use of any reserves. So, all the revenues and the expenses match with the suggested changes that I've given to you. The hotel motel tax fund is a fund that in and of itself doesn't have any expenses. You utilize that fund to cover expenses in the other funds and it appropriates the revenues that it receives plus a cash balance that it has of 1,719 to appropriate to other funds. Car rental fund's the same way. You can see it's budgeted at 3,200,000. In the last few years, we've actually received 5 million. Atlanta is required to give us a percentage share of the tax on all the rental cars at the airport. That 3,200,000 is a conservative number. You can see that we've used the cash balance in that fund as well. By and large, that fund supports debt service on the arena, debt service on the public safety building and one-time capital projects. You can see the rest of the funds, you go across the page, there's a, a little bit of reserve used in confiscated funds and state drug fund. The rest of the budget's all balanced. Next page, page 13. Here are the expenses and then the ending fund balance. There are many different ways to balance your budget. This is just one way that we're suggesting to you to get it done. The budget before you is balanced with revenues and expenses and no use of general fund reserves. Page 14. Here are your enterprise funds, funds operated by cities and counties that are operated like a business that have revenues, water and sewer revenues, electric revenues, airport revenues. They all, they're classified as enterprise fund. The only problem fund you have here is the sanitation fund. It is not producing sufficient revenues. You had a, a rate increase back in 2020 for it and for water and sewer. Water and sewer is doing okay. Sanitation fund, we're going to recommend that you have a rate increase. If you look at the top of the page, the golf course fund had a negative fund balance of 15,813. The sanitation fund had a negative fund balance of 19,903. And you add the revenues and on the next page, if you add the expenses, you can see that we needed a rate increase for the sanitation fund in order to make it work. The one thing I wanted to pay attention to is the golf course fund. Notice it has expenses of 776,000 and has revenues of 424,000. And so, you're subsidizing it with a transfer in of 351,000. Years ago, we used to lease the golf course out for private management and we actually made money. And whatever the expenses and revenues were, this private vendor got that. You may consider something like that in the future. You are subsidizing the golf course fund. Next page, page 15, page 16. Here are the capital projects funds for sploosed and t-sloosed. These are all balanced. You can see the revenues coming in, the expenses on the right-hand side of the page. Next page, page 17. This is just a pie chart to show you the 196 million dollar budget and the enterprise funds, 117 of it, the general fund's 48. Next page, let's go to the sanitation fund. I'm on page 19. Althea and I wanted to give you a five-year history of the sanitation fund so you can see really what's going on here. If you'll see the charges for services in 2020 with 2,834, you had a slight increase in 2020, July of 2020 for the 21 budget. You can see that the revenues did go up, 3,60,000. You can see in '22, they went to 3,266, in '23, 3,300,000, and '24, 3,400,000. If you would, look at the expenses. I focus on cost of sales, 737,20, 831 for the 24 budget, year-to-date actual was 674,000. Personnel, 1,420,000 and it's 1,824,000. And so, you can see that the sanitation fund for its budget is balanced. But for the year-to-date numbers, you can see that it has a 94,000 slight cash and for the end of the year, we're projecting that it'll have an $85,000 loss. Next page. So, you can see on page 20, the $85,000 loss. You can see the additional funds required to cover essential recurring expenses of 149,000. The city needs, I think it's four or five new of those trucks. We're going to do a lease purchase for those. It's about 1.1 million in total capital cost. If we finance it over a five-year period, it's 250,000 per year. So, you add that to those other two expense items and you can see that we need additional 484,000 in revenues in the sanitation fund. Turn to the next page. If we simply take the revenues and divide it about into the 484,000 figure, it's a 15% rate increase. And you can see here, Althea's taken what the amounts would be and you can see in red what the new proposed amount would be. And so, you can see the apartment complexes would go from 1815 to $20.87 a month, single family from 1815 to $20.87 a month, and the light commercial, 1925 to 2214. Next page. During your own budgets workshops, you all listening to your citizens actually requested various, the different items. Here's a list of all of those things that are included in the budget. Some things made it, some things didn't. And this entire 3,820,000 budget, 3,820,000 list is in the budget. Next page. This is our, our first public hearing. The vote will be at the Monday meeting on June the 17th. Tonight, I would think you all would want to direct me and staff, if you wanted to make any changes to what we've suggested, listen to the citizens' input and then we'll bring you back the final budget on Monday, June the 17th. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Start with questions, Councilmember McKenzie?
No questions except for Ed. We've already discussed it and you've answered all my questions. Thank you. This is a very good presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Karn?
All right, city manager? Yes, sir. I gotta say, this is one of the best budgets I've seen since I've been up here. I want to congratulate you. I know you didn't put it together all yourself, but at the end of the day, it's your budget. I want to thank finance, all the department heads that worked on this budget. I think this budget is a long time coming. The residents of this city for years on end have had a laundry list of items that they have been requesting from council members. Too much of the time, a lot of those items largely went ignored up here. Not by all of us, but the reason they ultimately were ignored is because the votes were not here to grant the... here to grant the residents specific kinds of things that they wanted to be included in this budget as a priority. So here's the good news. It's 2024 and the residents' priorities on that long laundry list that I've seen year after year after year are in this budget document, which is a good thing for most of the residents of this city. However, there's a set of folks that don't want to see that help and that direct service go to the people most in need. And at the end of the day, my obligation is to the residents first. And every resident doesn't need government as much as another resident. But I'm very proud of this budget and I got a few questions here. That's the first question is, are these additional employee pension, cost of living, all of this, you saying this isn't in the balanced budget or is this included?
It is in there, yes, sir.
Okay. Because it says here, additional citywide expenses to be discussed. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
Yes, sir.
All right. We've got the COLA in here and cost of living, that's a 4% increase, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, I think that's very generous and I want to put it on the record that that is extremely generous because the 2024 COLA nationally, the official national COLA is 3.2%. And that's according to the U.S. government. A lot of the Fortune 500 companies follow that number and that percentage. It's the official percentage for all social security benefits nationwide. Over 70 million U.S. residents, 3.2%. So for the record, it is good and generous.
I might point out, Councilman Carron, that inflation's only 3.4%.
That's right. So we are above that. Again, nationwide, 3.2% COLA increase. College Park, 4% COLA increase. And I'm putting that and emphasizing that in case anybody that says we don't look out for our employees. Well, I think you don't have the facts and I want to make sure that the facts are clear. The other thing I had, I heard you mention the golf course situation. I do think in my opinion that we need to get back to the traditional golf course model. It obviously made sense. There were a lot of changes when I left. When I came back, they weren't necessarily good financial decisions, but we are where we are. I would recommend we go back to that, that model that we had, city manager. The lease arrangement, we made money and folks enjoyed that golf course just as much. So I'd like to look at that. Again, I'm speaking for myself, that's what I'd like us to see. I want that golf course back to what it used to be, which was an asset, not a liability. I'm looking for assets in this budget. I'm looking for fewer liabilities. I want more assets. And that's what it used to be. So I think whatever we need to do to get it back as an asset, I think that's going to be a plus. Sanitation increases, I wanted to talk about that as well. Couple of things I will say, I think it's, you know, going from the 18, what's that, 1815 to $20.87, I think, is reasonable. As you know, we provide double the service that East Point does. And I'm putting that for the record once again so residents understand the benefits that we provide that other cities, surrounding cities do not provide their residents. City of East Point charges about the same amount, $18 and some change. Their service is once a week. I'm going to say it again, their service is once a week for $18 a month and some change. College Park service is twice a week for the same money. Twice a week for the same money. In addition to that, we do have a service where if you request it, we will come and get your trash receptacle, Herbie Kirby, whatever you got, come to the side of your house, come and get it, dump it, and put it back at the side of your house. That is a service that other cities do not provide. I'm going to say it again, that is a service that other cities do not provide. This is as close to valet trash service as I've seen. Other cities don't have that. And if they do, it's for far more money than what we're doing it for. So that increase will help us cover some things, but I do think I would recommend a slight increase on a couple of other areas here. Our apartment complexes, I see the recommended is $20.87. I think that needs to be closer to $25 as opposed to $20.87, city manager. And the light commercial, I'd like to see that rate at $25 as well. And here's the reason why. I make a lot of comments and remarks up here, but I qualify my comments and remarks. You know, one of the big problems with budgeting in this city is that we allocate based on what we're looking at in terms of the city in theory. We look at 14,000 people or so. We allocate, we allocate our sanitation trucks based on 14,000 people. I don't think that's a wise allocation and estimate when we swell up to 100,000 people a day in this city. We are not like other cities. We get a lot of company here. We've got 38, 39 hotels, motels in this city. We've got two martyr stations in this city. We've got the second largest convention center in the state of Georgia in this city. We have a huge percentage of restaurants in this city. In addition to the fact we have a sports arena and the busiest airport on the face of this planet. So we allocate based on the population, but it's not a good allocation in terms of litter. Obviously, it's not a great allocation. So we have to look at things a little bit differently in terms of just based on being the average city. College Park is not your average city. I would recommend that for apartment communities going to $25, I'd recommend $25 for light commercial. Single family stays, stays at the 20. I don't want to put any undue burden on residents, but we get a lot of company here and it's not the residents' fault. But in terms of businesses paying their fair share, I think that's what we need to look at doing. Last thing I say, I know in the community enhancement list, one of the big items that we get year-round, winter, summer, spring, or fall is food distribution and health with food. We have a lot of low-income communities and folks that are in need of some supplement at times. City manager, I see at the bottom of the community enhancement incentives list, we have a contingency line here, which is pretty adequate. I just want to make sure somewhere in here that it does say we intend for an allocation for food distribution annually. I mean, that contingency line, you know, obviously more than covers that and I wouldn't, we wouldn't be spending all of that on that, of course. But at minimum, the neighborhood of $50,000 for food distribution is a must for this city. And so I just, I just want that in the budget where it's somewhere, if it says contingencies slash food distribution, whatever you think, I just want to, I want it, I want to see it in that budget document somewhere. And if it comes out, if it's coming out of that line, that's the obvious line as far as I could tell, but unless you pull another rabbit out the hat. Okay, so that's, those are all my comments on this budget. I am very proud of this budget and this is a first for us. Putting the residents first, putting the residents' request first and foremost. Everything else is secondary. Everything else is secondary. We have the administration around what the residents are requesting. We handle everything else around what the residents are requesting. And I'm very proud of this budget, so that's all I got.
Councilmember Arnold?
I just have one question in reference to the one-time incentives. Is that the holiday incentive?
Yes, ma'am. I made notes and it's $500 for full-time and 250 for part-time.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do want to at least make one additional comment, which is, I'm glad that we were able to do that and to get it budgeted because that was a concern and also that we were able to get the COLA budgeted. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
Mr. Ed, well, I sent you an email. The only thing I'm trying to do is change the item in the community enhancement priorities from Herschel Row and Main Street Pocket Dog Park to Ward for Community Enhancements, comma, green space, comma, park improvements. And I want to say to the public that the Fulton County government did it at no cost, the parcel at Herschel Row and Main Street forming Roosevelt Highway after a couple years of talking back and forth. So that initial thought was to improve it. So that property was deeded us at no cost. And second thing is that Brandon Park was improved to about almost half million to a million dollars at no cost to the city from negotiating with the Folia Group, then Hawthorne Station. So we did get those two parks done at no cost to taxpayers. So instead of 450,000 for a dog park, I want to change it to Ward for Community Enhancement, comma, green space, comma, park improvement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And where'd you put the tomato plants?
On the shrubbery on that door going out from the side.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
City manager, I had a couple of...
Hold on, hold on, wait. Councilmember Carron, go right ahead.
Ed, one of the things we talked about earlier is that I did not see my budget, budget cuts in here, actually. And I wanted to touch on that for a minute. Every year, generally, this budget is not technically a balanced budget. And when I say not technically a balanced budget, as Ed mentioned, technically it's a supplemented budget. We do not spend the entire amount of this budget in any physical year that I've been up here ever. And for the most part, most cities don't. There's a lot of funds that are left on the table every year. And my suggestion was to take a look at that, those unspent budget line items. And generally, they're the same line items every year. A lot of vacant positions, of course, which we covered some of that in the budget. Salary, overtime budgets are not always spent. Contingency budgets are not always spent. You've got projects, special projects that don't happen that particular year or halfway done before the physical year. And you also have other kind of things that we budget for that we just end up not doing or that particular department doesn't do it for one reason or another. That's a lot of money that we leave on the table every year. And my suggestion in terms of budget cuts would add up that money that we consistently every single year do not spend and we're moving that out of the budget since we know consistently that it is not spent. Or even moving 50% of that out of the budget, which would even put more savings into this budget and possibly back into fund reserves. But we are balanced. But again, this is not a per se balanced budget technically. And Ed, if you can give an example from the last, one of the last years in terms of what we actually budgeted and what was actually spent. And I want the public to have an understanding of that. When they see us adding things to this balanced budget right now, it is balanced, but we're always to the good. Ed, what year was that that you mentioned, I asked you about?
So last year, Councilman Carron, the fiscal year in June 30, 23, we were able to add 8.5 million to the fund balance.
All right. And explain to the public so that it's clear. We budgeted one amount for the physical year last year. We spent another amount.
And revenues were higher.
And revenues were higher because we, when we budget, ladies and gentlemen, we always lowball revenues. It's called conservative budgeting, which we do. And I'm a big fan of conservative budgeting. I'm very conservative with a lot of things, maybe not with my politics, but with budgeting and the way I dress, very conservative. So I want folks to understand, every budget, we leave a lot of money on the table that we do not spend every year. And that money goes back into the pot for the next physical budget, of course, but we manage the city's butt money well. And contrary to popular belief, we know what we're doing up here. So I just wanted to mention that for the record so that there was no misunderstanding in terms of money, financing, and budgeting. We do have it well in hand. So we're not, we're not juggling bowling balls up here. We do know what we're doing and we're not playing around with the taxpayers' money. So I'll leave it at that.
Mayor, one thing Althea wanted me to make clear to y'all, the 4% cost of living increase, I'd said it had a $3,000 cap. That's 3,000 cap for anybody making over 75,000.
Mr. Wall, were we able to put funds in the general fund, back into the general fund reserves during COVID?
No, ma'am.
What happened?
So revenues came in much, much less than we had budgeted because of the pandemic and the shutdown, whatever they called it, the lockdown. So you all had to have 5% cuts for all departments. You cut 5% from department head salaries. You raised the millage rate on the two special tax districts. You raised electric rates, water sewer rates, sanitation rates. And even in spite of all that, the fund balance declined in 2021, but it did go back up in '22 and '23.
And some of the increase in '22 was due to ARPA, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much of that was due to ARPA?
I think it was two and a half million, maybe.
I was asking Mr. Wall, thank you.
Thank you.
And so I have some particular questions. On page two, Dr. Adadirin, the legislative line, the reduction due to personnel fringe benefits changes, could you explain that, please?
Page two, the legislative...
The third line under legislative, reduction due to personnel fringe benefits changes.
I have to check my...
Okay. All right, we'll move on to... Dr. Adadirin, do you want to explain the self-insured retention issue at this point or would you rather wait?
I want to what?
The self-insured...
It's Mr. Scott on the...
I thought you were going to handle that.
No, we have...
Because we had that conversation with you, me, Mr. Denmark, and Ms. Gilbert, that you were going to handle that.
No, we have Mr. Scott, the Gallagher Insurance Company that's supposed to be handling that one.
Oh.
Because he was in something that was done in-house. It's something that's statewide and that's why we have him there.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that was a surprise because you told me you were going to do it. But we'll move on. So in regard to the positions that have been frozen or reduced in force, who's going to be responsible for coordinating the, the drawing down of federal funds if we don't have a Director of Airport Affairs and we don't have a special projects manager?
Once the budget is balanced and we have people in place, it will be reassigned probably to the grant person.
But we don't have one right now, correct?
A grant person, but the, its grant position is in the budget to be filled.
I understand. But as of June 17... I understand. But as of June 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
This budget proposes that the Director of Airport Affairs be reduced. It's the only position in the entire budget that gets axed. Why is that? What was your rationale behind that?
Ma'am, ask the governing bodies because that was a recommendation from the governing bodies. It wasn't from me.
So, that's not your recommendation?
No, it was a recommendation.
All right.
And they're right there with you. You can ask them.
Okay. All right. So, if we don't have a Director of Airport Affairs, and I want to say on the record that I believe Ms. Carter's done an excellent job. I believe that she has taken the opportunity in the less than a year that she's been here and led with integrity and made great relationships across this region because it's not only airport affairs, it's intergovernmental affairs. And she has worked very, very hard to do that. I wholeheartedly disagree with the reduction in force that only targets her. I wouldn't be surprised if someone else comes along and suddenly we do a mid-year shift and this position comes back. But I guess I'll wait to see that develop. But let's talk about public safety because there are 11 public safety positions that you're also proposing to freeze. Could you give me some rationale on that, Dr. Adedirin?
On the six positions for the police officers that have been free, they were already approved for 15. That has not been filled.
Right.
And freezing these six positions from looking at previous budget, it was never filled.
Are we actively recruiting right now?
How?
Are we actively recruiting right now?
Yes.
All right. Are we actively recruiting firefighters? We'll just do it less. All right. So, I'm going to go back to my other question, though, because we don't have a grants manager. If we don't have a Director of Airport Affairs and we don't have a special projects manager, who's going to be the person to take the ball and ensure that the federal funds that we have been granted actually come to College Park? Because that's a process. That can be a complicated process. And so, we need to have some level of continuity. I know Ms. Carter's been working diligently on that. I believe our lobbyists in DC have echoed that. So, who fills the gap?
Once, once we have some of the positions filled, as I stated, the grant person, until then, I've been working with Jennifer Imo and a couple of the federal lobbyists, you know, along with Ms. Brecker. So, it's nothing that I don't have any communication or have dialogue or know what's going on. Yes, I do know what's going on. So, once some of the duties is relieved from me, you know, it'll be continuation. It won't be no cessation in, you know, interacting with them.
So, you'll be handling things?
Yes, I'll handle it.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Wall, in regard to the transfer in on the golf course, does that come from Hotel Motel or some other source?
See if I can tell. Hotel Motel.
All right. Thank you very much. And so, the Hotel Motel tax started with a available fund balance of 12.4 million. So, that transfer in of 300,000 and change is somewhat negligible in relation to the fund balance available?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Adedirin, have there been any efforts to, on this community enhancement initiatives list, that's page 22, have there been any efforts to seek outside resources such as grants, federal funding, partnerships within the community with nonprofits and other partners to not have 3.82 million dollars come out of, for the most part, our general fund for these initiatives? Has there been any examination of any other sources?
That was discussed during the budget process. That being that we don't have a grant person in place, you know, to go after state, county grants, you know, and once we get somebody in place, that's why it was requested that that position, the salary be increased so we can attract somebody. What was in there at first was very, very low, like $70,000.
Understood, understood.
So, once we get somebody in place, you know, it'll be a grant writer that'll be able to go after grants for the city.
I understand. Have we examined any other sources?
Right now, no, we haven't. No, we haven't looked at any. No.
All right. Where do these numbers come from?
Where do what?
Where do the numbers come from?
From the governing bodies in the different wards, you know, the project that they, you know, the residents ask for from them, you know, that's where the numbers came from.
What is the Community Assistance Engagement Initiative for $100,000? Could you step out if your phone's not working?
You have the list? No, no, I have that here. But it's the itemized list from each of the governing bodies. Okay. I can, you know, give that to you. For how to form a new order when I hear comes, a list of all these items was submitted by the governing bodies and that's where they all came from.
What are supplemental community engagement funds?
Ma'am, as I stated, I don't have the list with me. It came from the governing bodies sitting right there with you. And they should be the one, you know, that can answer you exactly which item belongs to what ward.
Okay. So, the Community Assistance Engagement Initiative, would someone like to speak on that?
I'd like to speak on a lot of this. And one thing I will say is that I think a lot of the reason that perhaps you may be in the dark is probably a good idea to communicate with us and ask us about the things that we're doing on behalf of our residents. And speaking for myself, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and talk to you about it and explain all of it. And all of this is needs-based. When you hear from residents year after year about pertinent issues and things that they would like to see in their community, those are expectations and quite frankly, demands that we're obligated to try our best to grant them. We have not been able to grant them before because the will to do it just was not up here and enough numbers. I'll just leave it at that. But the will to do for the community based on the community's needs, I believe, is up here now. And speaking for myself, I'm going to make it my business to deliver on every item in my community's laundry list to make sure that they're getting the things that they need and that we have more than enough funds to cover every need of our community. And any fund city manager that has not spent will go back into savings, general fund, fund reserves, as normal and as usual. But also for the record, with any budget, every dime of what is spent is well accounted for through finance, through the city manager, through our annual auditing process. So, this money isn't going down a mystery hole in outer space, folks, no more than it has gone down that mystery hole any year at all. Every dime that's spent up here in every city and in this city in particular is accounted for every single year. So, I just wanted to dispel any myths and rumors out here in terms of what is this, where is this, and why is this. But mayor, at some point, if you want to talk to me about my list, which I do have, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you in private about that if you'd like.
Sir, we're here now to talk about the budget, and so I'm asking the questions. And so, if you could explain the Community Assistance Engagement Initiative, I would appreciate it. I appreciate your suggestion about how I should do my job, but I'm here asking now. So, what is the Community Assistance Engagement Initiative for $100,000? Can anyone answer that today?
You can call me and I will explain at least the things and items I have as well. So, again...
So, no one can explain to me right now what the Community Assistance Engagement Initiative is?
I stated, the list that was turning from the governing bodies, once I can look at the list and I'll let you know.
Where is the list? Where is?
I don't, in my, you know, I mean, it was a list that was compiled that...
Okay. So, we have the public hearing at 7:30. So, can you get the list before 7:30?
I'll go up there and see where this came from, which ward, yes. I'll...
So, I will ask about all of these things at 7:30 then. Okay?
Each of the items, you know, I'll try to find them. That should be no problem.
All right. Well, I'll hold my questions until 7:30 then. Any others? Hearing done. Thank you, Mr. Wall. We'll move forward in the workshop. Councilmember Arnold, I believe the next item is yours.
It is. Thank you. Get to my notes here. Okay. So, I guess having the budget conversation right before this particular item probably just kind of sets it up pretty nicely. As we were going through our budget exercises, our budget workshops, it appeared that there may have been opportunities for us to do some cost savings citywide. And with Dr. Adedirin's permission, I met with the Finance Director and our Chief Information Officer to see if I could get a better understanding on some of the administrative applications and tools that we use and to see whether or not if we were duplicating cost by utilizing multiple services or applications. It definitely seemed to come out and it was a bit glaring as we were going from department to department when it came to subscription services. I think I even brought that one up when we were going through the exercise. And so, I think that, and this is just, you know, for conversation again, discussion, that it wouldn't hurt for us to start looking at some of those administrative costs and see whether or not if we can leverage some economies of scale as far as savings are concerned. For example, I'm sure we utilize, and I think that Mr. Hicks verified, that we use an enterprise application, ERP, throughout the city. But there may be some modules within that enterprise application that we're not using, or we may be using a third-party tool that's costing us additional money. Does it make sense for us to turn that module on and use it versus buying another software application or tool? And so, you know, I would like to see us do some type of study to understand where our monies are going when it comes to these types of services to see if we can save some additional dollars. And that was my purpose for wanting to have this conversation. I'd love to hear from my colleagues. We'll see what they have to say.
Any comments? Met with silence. But I like the idea of Councilmember Arnold.
Thank you.
I do, too.
I think you're up next again.
Okay, all right. Well, moving on. Another item that we talked about, and I know that there was discussion in the last meeting in reference to expanding the incentives that we provide, the utility credit in particular. And we also talked about the holiday incentive. My thought was, and we never got to this discussion, was how could we possibly offer a housing incentive? I think it's great that we would have a discussion to expand the utility credit. However, if you can't afford to keep a roof over your head, then what's the purpose of the credit, the utility credit, right? And so, you know, can we think of ways where we may be able to offer employees that work for the city, that live in the city? Can that then also become an attraction to individuals who are looking to come to the city and to help us to attract talent and to retain the talent that we have? I opened this one up, too, for discussion from my colleagues.
Any discussion? We do offer a $10,000 down payment assistance, but you'd like to increase that, is that what you're saying?
So, yes. And I'd like for us to publicize it a little bit more, too.
That's gone through community development, so I'm not sure at this point who would be taking the reins on that. Dr. Adedirin, you're interim economic development director, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, who could handle that within community development?
I've been speaking to, she's... She works with Celeste Jefferson, you know, from Ward 4. And she's supposed to come and make a, well, we're still in the discussion phase. She wants to come and make a presentation to council, I believe, fourth week in July, as to how to help employees when it comes to housing and what have you, down payment and on this particular housing issue, she's supposed to come and make a presentation on that.
So, the first meeting in July doesn't happen, so we only have one?
I have to, I have to check exactly, you know, we're in dialogue and she would like to make, come and make a presentation as to how to help not only city employees but city residents, you know, how to afford their down payment and how to be able to keep their houses when they do get it.
All right.
But I don't have a date on it yet, ma'am. No.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could also extend it to those who can't afford to get a house? Just a thought.
All right. Next.
Next up is the Brady, Presentation on the Brady Trail Enhancement Proposal presented by Dr. Melissa Williams, Community Chair. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Jamelle McKenzie, Ward 1.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Esteemed City Council of College Park and fellow residents of College Park. My name is Melissa Williams, and I'm pleased to present this proposal for the enhancement and the revitalization of the Brady Trail, which is an invaluable asset to our community. As a dedicated resident of Herschel Road and a homeowner neighboring the park, I'm deeply committed to the improvement and the preservation of the Brady Trail. The proposal enhancement outline in this document aims to transform the Brady Trail into a vibrant and accessible recreation space that celebrates the rich history of historic College Park. Before I start my presentation, I'd like to just say to you guys, I thank you guys for everything that you do. Public service is, wow, it seems like a huge undergoing and it takes a lot of time and attention. And for that, I am so appreciative of all that you do to make College Park an amazing community. So, the importance of the trail to our community. Trails plays a pivotal role in enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. They serve as a hub for outdoor recreation and it promotes active lifestyles, and it fosters a sense of community and connectivity. A sense of community and connectivity. Trails not only provide opportunities for physical exercise, which I'm totally about... Trails not only provide opportunities for physical exercise, which I'm totally about, and it also contributes to mental and wellbeing and environmental sustainability. By investing in the enhancement of the Brady Trail, we can create a welcoming and inclusive space that enriches the lives of those that utilize the trail. So about four weeks ago, I presented this proposal to you guys, so I think you guys already saw it. And in the budget, I was pleased to see that the Brady Trail was included, so I'm very, very excited about that. So I won't be lengthy in the items that we're asking for improvements for the trail, but I will go over them briefly. So the trail, while it's an awesome space, and again, it's across, right across the street from my residence and my four-year-old grandson BJ, he loves going to the trail when he's over. But of course, it does have some challenges and with the improvements, we're hoping to kind of eliminate those challenges. I'm going to start with the proposal for the budget. It's $200,000, which I saw in the proposal, $100,000 is already included. So we're halfway there, halfway there. But some of the things that the Brady Trail lacks is it doesn't have accessibility for disability individuals. Also, it has limited amenities such as trash cans and also it needs more safety. It needs lighting. It also needs telephones for safety. Of course, I know in our community, safety is always first. And it also lacks signage. Additionally, we're asking for some seating, some benches to be included, not a lot, but some benches at the beginning, possibly the middle and at the end of the trail. Again, additional lighting, LED lights would be amazing to be displayed along the trail. We're also asking for the trail to be accessible for cyclists and also individuals that may have golf course, golf carts that would want to drive to the golf course from the trail. Additional mile markers and lastly, some parking amenities, posing that parking be placed at the beginning of the trail and possibly at the end of the trail. So understanding that money is always an issue, we understand that possibly the enhancement may have to come in three phases, so we thought about that as well. So, you know, we may not get everything that we want at the beginning, but we broke it down into three phases. We're suggesting that we get the lighting for safety, the cameras and the emergency phones in Phase One. We're suggesting that we get the trail resurfaced in Phase Two and also the accessibility and the picnic benches in Phase Two as well. One of the things that is also an issue is that the maintenance of the trail needs to be conducted on a regular basis. It was actually maintained and cut, I guess, last week, but normally it's overgrown and that's an issue as well. And in the last phase, we're hoping for additional signage, of course, more trash cans and also making it accessible for bikers and cyclists. So I have broken down what, I did research, I broke down how the budget should be allocated for the different aspects of the eight, I think it's about 10 things that we're asking for. And lastly, you know, this vision for the Brady Trail is something that may not seem as important to you all, but it will be tremendous for the residents of College Park, especially if we're wanting to make sure that individuals in our community stay healthy and safe. I'm an avid jogger and so I love the trail and I'm hoping that you all will see this as an important initiative and vote for its improvements. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Councilmember McKenzie?
Well, of course, Dr. Williams, I want to say thank you again. Thank you for putting this together. You know, this is a wonderful proposal that you've given to us and of course, I'm totally on board. Not only is the Brady Trail a good piece of it in my ward, I think practically all, there is some in Ward Two, but even that, like I said, in the city of College Park, when we're living, we're not looking at Ward One, Ward Two. But met with you and some of the neighbors there on Herschel Road and I want to thank you for, you know, sometimes we have meetings, we talk about things, but then we don't put the pen to the paper. So this is an exhaustive piece of, you know, presentation that you've given us. And yes, I know there was discussion on community enhancements. This is an example of one of the things that I felt was necessary to put into the budget for this upcoming 2024, 2025 year to make sure we could at least get started on this project and that it would already be in the budget. An example of residents in the city reaching out to council members and letting us know how they would like to see their tax dollars. And these are your tax dollars, you pay taxes and that money should be given back to you in every form that we possibly can. So I want to thank you again, you know that I'm on board and what you have given us and you're helping us and our staff to now know what steps we want to take in terms of the phases. So thank you again for coming out tonight, we appreciate you as well.
Councilmember Carron?
Dr. Williams, thank you so much. We appreciate the community partners. Again, we appreciate you. I live on Herschel Road and for the last two and a half years, I asked about modifying Brady Trail. I asked for support. I wanted to see lighting on the Brady Trail. My wife and I are some of the few people that walk that trail regularly. And it's a fellow that walks that I do see occasionally as well. I see very few people on that trail, but it's a diamond in the rough. Problem is, it was rough. I asked for support on lighting. I wanted to see some nicer zelus along the trail, different stuff like this. But guess what? I didn't have the support of you. But you know, one thing about a new year is that you get to hit that reset button and give it another try. So I want to thank the council members. I want to thank, I'm thankful for the changes that we have had made and we're going to be improving things in this city like never before, like never before. But it cannot be done without folks like you. City manager, we asked, well, how are we going to manage things in the interim, in the lurch? This is a good example, community partners. That's how we're going to do it. If you're depending on government to solve all of your problems and handle everything, you are going to be let down, I can guarantee you. I've spent more years in government, as many years in government as anybody here. Government cannot do it all alone. It takes partnerships. It takes community residents that care enough about asking, that care enough about picking up a shovel and helping out if we're going to plant some plants. It takes community folks when we got cleanups. This is how it's going to get done, city manager, and we're going to do it together. Thank you for this and I'm glad that we got some traction on it now. All right.
Councilmember Arnold?
Thank you, it was an excellent presentation.
Councilmember Gay?
Thank you for your service.
Dr. Williams, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate the presentation and I appreciate your commitment to our outdoor spaces because recreational opportunities are so important across this entire city, from Bill Evans Field to the Brady Trail to Phillips Park, it all matters and it does take all of us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And it looks like we've got about 13 minutes before we begin our regular session, so we'll see everyone at 7:30.